All right, well, thank you, everybody, for coming. Tonight, May eighth, six P. M., this is the start of the Rutland Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Members of Jacob Morris, Bob Paulson, Artie Wells, Butch Nato, myself, Chris Senical. First, we have online people as well. We have this set up for online. All the information's been posted online, and we have Peter Crane, who manages this, and we'll put up some plans as we need them, so we can look at those on the big screen. Okay? First thing up on the on the on the meeting tonight is the acceptance of the meeting minutes. We have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Bob, second? Artie, second? Any discussion on the meeting minutes? I'm fine the way they were. Anything, we're all good? All right, so do we have a vote to, so all in favor of accepting those meeting minutes? Aye? Yonays? Unanimous. Meeting minutes are good. All right, next up on the agenda is the public hearing for Branded Realty Group Second LLC, AKA Dunkin' Donuts, at two fifty-five Main Street. This is an application for a site plan modification that the zoning board had heard many moons ago, and you folks are back here to redesign some of that parking lot layout, and I'd like to just say thank you very much for being good stewards and helping out, easing the traffic and the pedestrian concerns that exist with the booming business up there. So that's well received by the town, I can assure you. Like to bring everybody up to speed on some of the information that we've received since the applicant filed the the site plan amendment. We had received, the Board of Health had no problems, as long as there was nothing going on inside the building, so they're fine. It's all town water and sewer. We received, that's from one of my customers, that's the wrong email, Kevin Quinn. I had spoken to Tamika to engage Kevin Quinn from Quinn Engineering to be kind of the town engineer for this project, to oversee things. We have a memo from him, and he expressed concern about the parking flow and the pedestrian flow. Chief of Police sent the memo in, expressing basically the same thing. So we had that. We also had the Planning Board, who sent the memo, and they basically expressed the same things. They had eight items that we can go through with them as well. You can consider those, and I believe that was pretty much everything, correct?
It was.
As far as correspondence?
And we provided them to Patrick and Matt today as well, so that they were familiar with what some of the concerns were.
Yeah, and then Kevin put out, Kevin Quinn, Quinn Engineering, put out a memo today after, we also, just to bring the board, the group up, they had a pre-conference this morning, which I hope went well, between Kevin Quinn and the engineer, and they discussed that flow and their concerns, and so I think what we'll do is, I'd like to just kind of start the meeting off, hear from the engineer, just what came about from that meeting this morning, kind of where any new information stands, and then we can kind of take all their information in, and then we'll kind of bounce it around us, okay, guys? So, if you would, sir?
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Patrick Healy, I'm a civil engineer, I work with Thompson Liston Associates, I'm one of the principals there. So we've been working with Branded Realty over several years to look at this property, to try to make improvements to the property's function and circulation. Matt Doyle is one of the principals from Branded Realty, here with me this evening.
Welcome, guys, nice to meet you.
Matt and I have looked at several different options over the years, to try to come up with a better traffic pattern, and to improve their business function within the drive-through lane. So one of the key metrics to look at is the time between the order menu and the delivery window, and right now, there's not enough time on that site. So what you're seeing is a backup, because there's a delay in the time of service. So the improvements that we're proposing will lengthen the drive-through lane, so we'll have five car lengths between the window and the menu, and then we'll have room for ten cars in total backing up in the drive-through lane.
So ten, ten beyond the five, so fifteen or ten total?
Ten altogether, so we have a two-hundred-and-forty-foot lane that's unimpeded, which would be a vast improvement over the current situation. So our clients have purchased the adjacent property that went into tax title, and they've taken down the house, there's an existing curb cut there on the state highway, which would give us the ability to have a second means of entrance to the property, so that any southbound traffic coming down one-twenty-two could take that right into the property before getting to the intersection in the existing driveway. Given that the school is right down the street, that's sort of an important traffic pattern in the morning and the afternoon, something they're trying to improve on. So what we're proposing on the site, in addition to that additional curb cut, is to expand the parking area behind the building, the drive-through lane, put a small addition on the back of the building for a storage room at the first floor, and a ramp, and to sort of centralize the deliveries and trash collection, all, you know, adjacent to the building, so those employees are not crossing the traffic lanes to do their important functions there. Overall, there is an increase in impervious area, we're proposing to mitigate that through a new stormwater system, which would have an infiltration component underneath the parking lot and fill that's proposed, and then as part of the improvements, we would eliminate that gravel parking area down at the lower level of the site, and bring approximately ten to twelve feet of fill in there, and level that whole back of the site up, which improves parking, access, you know, circulation, and so forth. If you'd like to pick the plan up, we can maybe look at.
Sure, Peter, if you could pull up, do you have a drawing particularly that you like, Patrick?
Well, I think if we look at the second site plan sheet.
What, the existing or the?
This is a good one to look at.
This is a good one, isn't it?
So here, this is where the new driveway would come in.
And that's that existing curb cut you mentioned, Patrick, right?
Yes, we're using that existing curb cut, we're widening it a bit, so we can have some smoother turns. Essentially, you have this lane coming up to here that doesn't exist today, you have all of this parking be expanded out here. There's a retaining wall on this side to try to make up that.
Patrick, if you could, if I can just for a minute, guys, if you see the main portion of the Dunkin' Donuts building, that's the existing building right now, so everything beyond right there where it is, that's a little addition, there's walkways, and then the dumpsters right there, so right now, the people have to cross that drive-through to put trash in the dumpster, so that's the expansion he's talking about, to the building and those services.
Thank you. So these are existing parking spaces on this side, adjacent to Fairview Avenue, and pretty much everything past this point, where we have this dashed line, this is all expanded.
Patrick, those parking spaces, is that what's existing right now, or is that, are they additional?
Those are existing twelve spaces.
That's existing, and that's to stay right where they are, the way they are?
Yes, sir. And then we're realigning the drive-through lane here to bring it away from the building, so we can have a radius in here.
Yeah, that's tight, yeah.
This is right up against the building corner, smoothes the traffic out a little bit, so it makes the traffic smoother. Here, the menu board would be at the rear of the site, so it's not adjacent to the residential neighbors or anything, and then here's the five-car lengths that I was talking about, between delivery window, one, two, three, four, five.
So by pushing that all back, you get that extra depth you're talking about?
Right, so Matt can explain this in more detail, but it's important to have that particular distance between here and there for the.
Is that what other Dunkin' Donuts, is that like that?
When you have three cars, you can only stack so many orders, so what we find in the data from store to store, when we develop and operate in all those stores that we do, you have less cars per hour, especially during rush period. When you go to a five-car stack, we can stage more orders, where you get a lot more throughput, sometimes up to thirty-five percent. So you'll see the seconds between that menu board and drive-through go faster, which moves that line within that hour.
So that moves the line, and other people aren't stacked up out in the street when they get in?
Correct, it will help flow better, and that, if you, that given hour, if you look at, when you're comparing apples to apples, when you look at that giving hour, if there's our transactions in that hour, you would process them quicker.
So it's important to note, too, that you process them, you process them quicker, but they will always, you know, I find, you know, human nature's human nature in that people that don't go because of the stack-up, you know, they see the traffic, so you're going to get more customers, so that doesn't necessarily mean the stack-up still won't be there, you know? So that's why we want to make sure we've got more, you know, even more room for that still existing stack-up to be there, you know? Just keep that in mind when you, when we go.
That's why three cars, if you think about it, we can only transact, so if you have people waiting to assemble orders, but you can't get the order, then you can't assemble till you take the order, so. It's kind of a ratio in the way you set up the store itself, with the number of people, and how you flow within a drive-through, so our store setup, and the planning for this, and hoping that we could do this, when we remodeled the store this last time, we set it up for that type of success.
For that size of volume, basically?
Yeah, to help with any increased volume, or the current volume that the store is at.
The Maxx organization operates about a hundred different sites, so they're the experts in this field about how to maximize efficiency.
Yeah, you got the data, you know.
We know, because they track it, and that's how the managers and our teams and our staff all work is under that, they're always trying to, you know, drive that, so we do have drive-through timers, so they're constantly looking at that data and studying it to help.
Good.
Help improve it.
That's good for everybody, you know?
It is.
See your business do well, and see the people get their product quickly, it's a win-win for everybody.
So that first entrance, that we're talking about, the brand-new one, does that not go to the drive-through, that goes to parking?
Well, you would have the customers entering here, southbound, come in this way, they could either park, or they could go around here and come into the driveway. So these cars, if these, if there are, in fact, people waiting here, they're going to be waiting to turn here, they're not going to be waiting out in the street to turn.
No, and, you know, you guys are in town, so when you think about it, right, you know the existing plan, can, look at this plan and see it's shorter, know that the cars are from the drive-through all the way around the building, but it's shorter, it's tighter radius, they go down that little road and back out, and you see, what, four or five cars sometimes, the max, that's the most I think I've ever seen, out there in the road, you know, backed out, two to four, maybe is the worst case. So just take that, the tail of this dog, if you will, and wrap it around that building, and you can see how much more space they have now. It's longer, you know, the loop is longer.
The chair, yes, you have a longer loop here.
Exactly, that loop is longer, and then you got a whole extra wrap to it, basically, before you get to the street. So that certainly would almost mitigate that, worst case, four to five, where people see that, they just drive by. You know, they're just like, oh, I'm not going to play hard.
No, they don't, they just get right in line.
They cut the guy off.
Then T-ball me when I take a left.
That's the thing, it's not so much people going in, it's people leaving.
Both.
We're all trying to get out of that fifty-six, and the car's going both ways, and then you just, guys come out of Dunkin', you're like, okay, which way you going, buddy? You know, and you're trying not to get hit.
The wild west, yeah.
That's what, that's what happens.
The parking in the back is a huge bonus for us, because everything is down low now, there's a set of stairs there from years ago, because stairs are a liability, and they're going to deteriorate, so naturally, bringing that parking up between employees and customers, it's a lot, it actually, I couldn't, it gives us a lot more, you know, usability with the parking, and gets rid of that, those stairs. You know, by sloping that off to the woods and just.
There's still any concern about when the cars are coming through, that there's going to be more cars trying to get out of one way, you know, coming to the flow of traffic?
Mr. Quinn and the police chief have expressed some concerns with the traffic pattern, so we'll be discussing that in more detail.
Yeah, we'll get to that in more detail, but yeah, all right, so go ahead, keep going, I don't want to get off track there.
So as I was saying, the stormwater system that we're proposing, if we can go to the next plan, to the grading plan.
Peter, can you turn the page, please?
Looked up where that is.
Swami.
Here we go, so we're putting some catch basins here on this part of the driveway, one here on the drive-through lane, these are the two existing catch basins, and then here, we're putting a treatment device, and this is an underground infiltration system, so it acts as both infiltration and detention. We do have to have an overflow pipe for that, just in case it fills up during, you know, a large rainfall, say more than five inches of rainfall, it would have to overflow. Conservation Commission has asked us to look at moving this back, to be a little further away from the wetland. I have some comments from D. E. P. that I need to address with regard to the stormwater, but I think we can handle that, and Mr. Quinn will also be reviewing the stormwater aspects.
Yeah.
So we had our initial Conservation Commission hearing, they want some additional details about the slope stabilization and the construction period runoff, which we'll be providing to them over the next week or so.
What are you planning on having that slope, is that grass, what, stone?
Yeah, with grass.
It's grass?
It would be vegetated slope, that's seeded, when it's first seeded, there would be some fabric put on it to keep it stable.
Sure, you have to stabilize it, yeah.
Till the roots establish.
Okay, and that, the tree line, that's there, so right now, when you look off that bank, and you get the steps, you look down, it's got like a dirt lot right there, and then it's like a tree line. Can you kind of just point on that plan where that tree line would be? I really couldn't tell from that drawing, sir. Is it pretty much with a?
Their existing tree line is pretty close to here.
So that's, you're filling right up to the tree line, basically?
We're going a little bit beyond the tree line to tie in the slope, so this is the existing pipe end, if you look off the edge, you can see where that pipe comes out, we're pretty much even with that, and that's about five to six feet off the wetland boundary.
Okay, now, and just, I just want to point something out to the board members, that that roadway there, Fairview Ave, that's a paved area, there's a, there's a, you know, you get the garage door that comes out of the building there, and, so they need to, see the way the grade curves right there, that kind of blends into that, because that's, again, that's, that's pretty low down there, too, you know?
So yes, these lines are indicating the slope, the amount of fill we're putting in, so we're taking this grade here, pushing it back to here, then we're sloping down from there.
If you show them the toe of the existing slope, there's the existing slope back in there.
These smaller lines, you see, that's the existing slope.
That's the old bank, gotcha.
There's a stairway in here, I don't think I'm showing you on this plan, that's right about here, it winds up with the building, there's a concrete staircase that goes up.
Yeah, that, yep, saw that, yeah, okay, all right. And is that's pretty much what you're planning on doing in that shot right there?
That's it.
Okay, just to ask you a question, did, was there any, in talking with Mr. Quinn today, were there, were there any new plan ideas that you're coming up with, or just, did you just agree that, boy, we got to try to make it better, but no set plan yet?
We'll have a discussion with him about some suggestions that he made about improving the traffic flow, get into exactly what those are here, because they're not before you at the moment, but we have to develop them a little further and test them out.
I would just, you know, I went up to the site, I spent some time there, I just looked at it, I'm in construction, and just looking at this, I'm just going to give you, you know, my concern, you know, obviously, that thing, and what I thought was, if you had the, you know, again, you got the one-way coming up in, and then make the other one a one-way out, and don't allow traffic to come in from the existing entrance, the way it's two-lane traffic right now, so it'd be a two-lane egress, right turn to go right only, left lane to go left or straight across the fifty-six, okay, if you call that straight, it's a little bit of a zig, but, you know, and then you make, so you come in, just like you said, you can either park on the outside edges, like you have it, or you do the loop around, okay, to get into the drive-through, so you're going to drive around the structure and come in, I would almost, where the corner of the existing entrance is, I would just put a little bit of a corner there, so that nobody, nobody can jump in, even if you, even if you go the wrong way, you can't jump in, like, you know what I'm saying, like, like right where that entrance is?
Talking over here, sir?
No, I think you're talking that corner with, sir.
So, so just a couple ideas I have is, right here, you just put like a little, little corner here to keep anybody from cutting in, because battle is resistance, it's human nature, okay, we all know why we're here, but you come in this way, you can, you make another select lane right here, where both cars, both lanes almost have to stop here for pedestrian traffic, and then also to egress properly, because there will be some crossover here, if the, if this guy wants to go right, this guy wants to go left, whatever, okay? Doing that, now, I know that makes this tight here, but the other idea I had was, turning these spaces forty-five, so that if you come in and you're on, you might lose the space, but it's going to make this a lot safer here, for people backing up and having the room to back up and egress. So, and I just think that keeps this, you know, this double loop, you're going to have tons of room there, for all the traffic in the world, you can provide coffee for, and it keeps the traffic flow, you know, for people that want to park there, employees or, you know, you know, general people walking in, walking in business, they're on the outside skirt, they stay on the outside skirt to get to the entrance, these people loop around, and then they get to the entrance and go. You know, it's tough, I don't know, it's almost like the drive-through's on the wrong side, or in the wrong spot, the way it is, but it is what it is, we're not changing that, okay? But those are my ideas, and I just put it out there for my two cents, and you can do what you want, but I think that mitigates, you know, maintains that pedestrian lane for people, I don't know if there's something here you can have for people coming from the back, just to watch them, you know? You know, once you place your order, you're in a hurry, you know what I mean, those guys have to gas, I don't want to see them take anybody up, but, you know, but just things like that, so that's, that was, those are my ideas, and, you know, I thought about maybe something going out this way, but it's just really not practical with the grade there, to meet the existing grade, it's just never going to happen, you know, and even, and just, you know, just so everybody knows, even like, if you wanted to move this over to make more room, the egress, there's a telephone pole right here, so you're not, you're really kind of landlocked here for that opening, you can move it a couple feet, but you're not going to get much more than that, so. I don't know if that gives you room for your deliveries, and if that works with the flow of delivery, or if they need to come in this way, you know, I'm not sure if you make this a little wider, I don't know, I know, you get your dumpsters, it's got to come around and get to this, you know, and you got your delivery guys, you got to come in and unload, but I would imagine they would just come in on a semi-truck and just unload right here in the middle, right? I mean, I don't know.
The semi, the good thing about this with the expansion is it gives us more storage to organize the storage better, we go down, we, our goal is once-a-week delivery, for years, it's always been twice, they charge for a second, but our goal, it's easier to take once a week, so it keeps the truck out of, out of the area.
Are those off-hours, or are they early in the morning?
They're off-times.
Off-time, right, yeah, same with the dumpster guys, I'm sure they're not.
Yeah, when they schedule.
So, again, cutting through that, I mean, you got to think of it, that this outside drive-through permanent lane, fixed lane, it's only going to be during, you know, when the T-ball gets out, or, you know, that, that morning rush hour, it's not going to be all the time, so I think that's important to remember, but anyways, that was my idea, just kind of some ideas coming up with it, just wanted to shoot that out there.
So Mr. Quinn made a similar suggestion to the traffic pattern, when I said we need to test it out, we need to run our track, our truck-turning software, to make sure that some of these things will work before we present them back to you.
Any other ideas or thoughts you guys had, did it, so that was, did, he talked about doing that loop like that?
Similar.
Making it one-way?
Yeah, egress, yep, one and one.
And then, you know, look at the, again, I just look at turning those spaces on an angle, you might lose a little bit, one or something, but it might be worth it, make it a lot easier.
If it's one-way, you could.
Because the one thing in reality, what you got to remember of, you guys raised the concrete pad, you know, we lowered that and raised that, you guys came back and did that a while ago, and so you have a car there, and that car is always pretty tight to the building, obviously, right, they're receiving their product, but that, that comes off and slopes out, because it's a pretty good incline, so you've got, when you look at the plan, you got your twenty-seven feet to your center line of that drive, but you have to remember that that drive is a little wider at that concrete, you know, entrance, because you're losing a little bit of the main drive towards those parking spaces, so to have that, you know, associated lane, right, dictated lane for the, for the, for the drive-through, and then have enough room for a car to get out, it starts to get a little tight there.
Yeah, the forty-five works.
You know, some of these guys come in with a bigger pickup truck, it's going to be really hard to get out, straight, on a straight, a straight entrance, but if you come in on an angle and you come out, it might make it a little.
A little easier.
A little easier, you might lose one space, maybe two, but, boy, it's going to make the flow and the safety and all that a lot, you know, a lot better, I think, my opinion, so that's just my two cents. Anybody here have any other comments or questions?
I like your idea, I do, too.
Well, I do, and it's more big picture, you know, I, I'm one of, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people that come up to, we call it uptown, from Palmegusset, everybody's got a turn left that's going to work, for about three hours a day, as you know, it's unbelievable in there, and it's really got to do with the offset nature of the current entrance and exit, we've got a stop sign, legally, they can go, but we, you know, but half the time, we, you know, after sitting there, we got to jump out and go, and so, you know, I had, this is the first time I've really seen the plans or talked about it, and I've just been curious, you know, to, to me, I think a lot of people in town, it's, how is this going to reduce and mitigate the traffic situation when we still have people turning in and coming out, needing to turn right, needing to turn left, so what, you know, what is this scenario as it stands right now, what is it going to do to mitigate that situation?
I don't know, you know, we're still going to have the same number of customers that want to get in there, so one of the things to be concerned about, if we do make it a one-way pattern, is removing those left-turn customers that are coming.
Well, I wasn't saying, I'm just asking you, I mean, I'm not sure if you could ever make it a one-way pattern, I'm just asking you, well, to what extent is this new configuration addressing that problem?
The entrance is important, that's why the lot, you know, we started looking at this with several renditions, we started studying it, picking up more traffic coming in on the AM side before, is it Palmegusset?
Palmegusset, yeah, Route fifty-six.
Road of fifty-six across, we're trying to take that traffic and bring it in before it gets, so we're trying to address your concern that, can we solve a hundred percent of it, no, but can we take the cars that are coming from the elementary school?
So the idea is with the new entrance that is, you know.
You're taking that traffic away?
You know, I kind of consider it west, but you're going to get.
The eastbound traffic.
The eastbound traffic, a lot of it's going to enter.
Enter.
There and not.
Get into the intersection.
Yeah, so that's, to that extent, it would mitigate.
It would help mitigate it, because you're taking some of those cars away before entering that intersection, so that's why that curb cut, we're trying to utilize that curb cut to bring that flow in, and sooner.
Just looking at, just looking at round numbers, you're going to pick up ten percent of the traffic from that roadway.
So that would reduce the main entrance in and out by ten percent?
Would tend to give you more gaps between the traffic, if they're turning off before the intersection, giving your exiting traffic more opportunity to turn around.
But that's the primary feature, as far as reducing the situation right at the intersections.
To take more cars away from the intersection, yes.
And when we go, go back and look at the assessment, whether, you know, going entrance and exit may help that, your, the second piece would help maybe flow where people are coming in and leaving, where it may help that.
You know, the one-way thing, I, I, and I like the entrance on that, you know, westerly lowest point right there in this plan, and by going the one-way, you're bringing the fifty-six, you know, north, traffic heading south, they got to make a right to make the left in, right? So they're not going to be just shooting across and logjamming that whole thing up, because that's where it gets pretty wild there.
Right.
If they can't get in, or someone's backing out of one of those spaces, close to the roadway, and they, even if they're not going right immediately into your drive-through right now, but if they try to go into the parking lot, and that guy's backing out, that's, that's, they're on the brakes, and then it's a, it's a sideshow, you know? So that, that way there, they, it's more of a stop and then turn into the site on the lower side.
No, I get it, I mean, I'm just curious as to the extent to which.
It's going to help, it's going to help.
It's going to help, you know, but I think a lot of people think that's the primary point of the whole thing, and if it's a ten percent reduction, I just think people should know that.
You know, one thing the Planning Board talked about was, you know, a traffic study for the, for the, for the highway area, and how that's going to flow, and, you know, it's something to consider, but I think first, before we just go down that rabbit hole, I think we want to just get a confirmed plan.
Yeah.
That this is the best scenario that, you know, between Quinn Engineering, their engineer, and the, and the board here agrees, this is the best plan we can put forth, then if we did want to determine that we need a traffic study, we can look at that, I'm not convinced right now that we need that, okay? Because at that point, you're doing the best you can do with what the, what you have to work with, and, you know, what are you going to do, you know, tell them they can't sell Dunkin' Donuts yet, because, you know, I mean, what's the point of the traffic study at that point?
So through the, through the chair, the facility's already here, the customers are already here, the traffic study is only going to help us with the flow pattern, it's not going to tell you anything about the capacity or the roadway, we already know, you know, they already know exactly how many cars come through the site on a daily basis.
I think we, I'm, right now, you know, I know Quinn's top-notch, and Patrick, you seem like you, you know, you're a real smart guy, and you know your business, so I would think that we can come up with the best plan here without having to go down that road, and if we've got every detail covered here, and we really do a great thorough job here, you know, we should be able to accomplish that, because again, you know, we appreciate you guys coming in here, trying to solve a town problem, and your problem, but the town's problem, too, and, you know, we want to work with you, too.
No, appreciate that, but I think today, we had a very productive meeting with it taking, you know, talking it through.
So, Mr. Chair, we do have the Conservation Commission to get through, we have a D. E. We have a D P review currently underway, because we're near Zone A to a public water supply. And we're gonna have to go to Mass DOT once we all agree on...
To get their approval, because it's a state road, right?
Because we're changing the nature of the traffic in that existing curb cut.
Okay. Um, what is the timing, Patrick, of those three? I know the conservation, you're pretty well along, but you've still got ways to go, right?
I think we're pretty close with conservation, uh, probably this month we'll leave.
D P W shouldn't be a big deal either, right?
We can't apply to Mass DOT until we have all the town permits in place.
Okay.
They don't even wanna talk to us.
Yeah, but, but I thought you said some D, D P W local...
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry, D E P.
D E P, or just D E P.
We, when we file the conservation, we also mail to D E P, and they have some specific questions that we need to answer.
That would be an order of condition for us.
We can't handle, you know, I expect we'll turn that around before the next Conservation Commission meeting, so. Should be able to take care of that.
Alright.
I just don't wanna, you know, not be upfront with you, but other permits are, you know, we have to go through other reviews to, to get the project approved after you agree on the layout.
And again, I, I, I'm making it one-way, you know, in and out, that's not gonna affect the Conservation Commission at all. You know, as long as you don't change the size of the asphalt to the area, right? I mean, um, so, I don't know what the best flow here is, you know, what, what's, what's gotta come first, yeah, to make this come together the right way for everybody. Um, it would be nice to have the Conservation Commission kinda at least wrapped up in here before we approve this, but it's not the end of the world. And I don't know how, to what extent you think you have to re-modify your plan, and if that'll affect anything with the Conservation Commission, um, but regardless...
I don't expect that anything we've discussed about the different options would affect the amount of work or the scope of work within the hundred-foot buffer zone to the wetland, or the nature of the stormwater.
Okay.
And that's really what they're reviewing as part of the logistics.
Exactly, you know? And the DOT is the DOT, there's nothing, that's between you and them. It'll just be an order of condition with us, and off you go.
Correct.
Um, alright, anything else from, any of you gentlemen? No? Okay, um, at this time, just open it up to public comment, and, um, please just state your name for the record, for Tamika to write down. And you know, Tamika, I gotta apologize, I didn't introduce you in the beginning of the meeting, but this is Tamika Murphy, the secretary here, who's really, does actually all the work here. I mean, we're just, you know, the, the good-looking faces up here. She's, they're really the brains and all the work of the operation. So, again, I apologize, I always do that. Um, but sir, go ahead, just again, please state your name and address.
John Charbonneau, I'm the town planner.
Oh, yeah.
And so, I have a couple minor suggestions that if the board would allow me to, that I'd like the applicant and the board to entertain. Um, one of the main concerns about any drive-through establishment is pedestrian safety. Obviously, this is an issue right here. So just a couple things that may increase pedestrian safety a little bit, that I've seen in other projects in other communities. I know you said that you're gonna resurface the entire parking lot. While they're doing that, potentially making this crosswalk area a contrasting material, maybe a stamped concrete with lining on each side, just to kind of make it stand out a little bit, and ma- put more emphasis on the crosswalk across, across this part. And also maybe put a little sign here for the motorists, warning them that there's pedestrians coming out from the building, just those two things. I've seen those done at other fast...
Let me echo you, I think that's a great point, and even, you know, Patrick, to my point of making that loop around, I think both lanes there, you know, coming out of the actual receiving your product line, and the, and the initial loop-through line, like stop signs by that crosswalk and signage, you know, look for pedestrians, like, as much as you can do to, to mitigate any, you know, again, hey, people on their phones a lot, and, you know, maybe assign, uh, put your phone down and... What's your order, what's your order? What's your order, alright? And, uh...
You can order from your phone now, right?
I know, I know. So what's your order, put your phone down, and look where you're going. Alright. But that's a great point, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Um, Dick?
Dick Williams, planning board. One of the things I, I asked for a traffic study, and I do hope you keep it on there, because I have talked to Mass DOT, and they are quite concerned about it. The one thing I wanna know, did anybody ever look at back at any of the deeds to find out if Ron Pepperiski has a legal second way into his property?
I don't believe he does, no.
You went back through, I mean, it was prior to him, of course, it was his mother and then his, his father originally.
No.
What does that mean?
We're fired, there were no, there were no deeds, there were no easements.
What does that mean, a second, like, what are you talking about?
Because he, he goes out to Fairview, you know, in the, in the past.
Also, so that, that, is that dirt lot behind you, is that part of the na- the other lot that you just purchased?
No, it's part of our lot.
It was always part of your lot?
No, I'm sorry.
He's talking about two fifty-five.
Yup.
Yup.
No, but, uh, this part of the lot, over here, this, this long stretch here, this is the part that our client bought recently on the tax title.
Alright.
Uh, so this lot has benefited an easement out to Fairview.
I got you.
The one he purchased. This lot does not.
Got you, okay.
Look, can, can I ask Dick something?
Sure.
So, you know, we just got the packet today with a, with a, a planning board memo. Uh, I take it your question has to do with a, a different configuration with an exit on Fairview Ave?
Correct.
Well, it's just, I don't even, you know, tell me or us how that would work in theory. You know, how, where, where it would run and, and where it would come out.
Well, that's just it, I, I, you know, this is the first time, you know, this past, uh, meeting that we had on this. I don't know how steep the banking is, or where the, the line is, you talked about the tree line and all that, and, uh...
But I mean, what's the idea that there would be...
A second one in case there was accidents or you needed emergency, it's up, you know, I'm always thinking, just like in here, if you couldn't get out this door, how do you get out of this room? And that's, that's one of the things, and, and I'm just saying that, uh, sometimes I feel that people don't read the deeds from way back when and what is in it, and I just wanna make sure that somebody has.
I think with the expansion and the levelness of that lot, you just don't have the grade to connect up to that bottom part of Fairview down. See where the end of the parking is right now? And you see that grade, the grade lines right there? That's about a twelve-foot difference. And that road is extremely tight, I mean, even from the parking, where the parking is right there, where the grade is only about four feet or so lower than the parking spaces?
Yeah.
Like, to make a turn there...
Yeah, I've been living, where is it? I've been living here for twenty years, and I still don't, can't figure out where Fairview is.
Yeah, Cleese Building, so you see Cleese Building?
It's sort of a dirt road?
No, it's a paved road going right down the side of Cleese Blue Building.
Okay, yeah.
You know, the blue building right next to it, right there.
That's where they park, right? Go underneath, they park.
Exactly, and see, you see in the plan right there, there's like a, almost like a little, um, entrance right there? That's a garage door right there, they go underneath it. So that's the grade difference, because, because that upper floor is level with the parking lot.
Right.
And it continues, that grade continues after that driveway. So right where the end of the parking lot is, out be, just near the tree line, so where the, where the back gravel's gonna be, that's pretty much a low point there, and that's a good twelve, maybe even be more, uh, twelve feet from the elevation change. Because I looked at that, I, I saw that in your memo, Dick, from the planning board, but personally, just going up there, I, I just don't see... Because I like that idea of maybe letting, you know, traffic come in that way, and that might alleviate maybe traffic leaving the site. Like, if you just wanna go right, go out Fairview, you know?
Yeah.
But I just don't see how you can make that driveway without smashing into the building, or, I mean, any, you know, unless you're in a bicycle. Yeah, you need a real small car, and I, I just don't, I had a hard time with that, but again, the engineers, um, with something we can bring up with Kevin later on, if, if it's something still, but I, I don't know if that's really a feasible thing, really. It's a challenging site, you know what I mean, for, you know, open spaces, but, I push up on a little mole and, you know, it's tough. Yeah, Dick?
Just, just one more thing, one of the other members had mentioned something about, uh, how come you're not like McDonald's, where you have two, uh, places to stop to give your order? Instead of trying to, you know, circle everybody around and, you know, try to get them in quicker?
Because you need a larger site to do that.
Yeah, see, the thing is, when McDonald's or Burger King look for sites, they have more indoor seating. And normally, they're looking for at least half an acre, at least, because they...
More, more than that.
Yeah, but was it like, more like an acre?
More than that.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, they, they look for a larger site, whereas Dunkin' Donuts go on the smaller sites. So to, to this point, that's exactly, the, the two-headed drive-throughs only work on those sites because of the larger.
I've never seen one at a Dunkin'.
No, no, not at Dunkin'.
We have them, but it, you have, it has to lay out, civil, with the civil engineering has to lay it out for the traffic to flow, because it, it, it's great, it's a good combo, it's just, to add that extra lane, you, you gotta add an extra lane. There's no way, because now you're stacking between that escape lane, lane one, lane two, and escape, now you're, you're pushing that even further. You could do it, it's just, you're gonna push it out.
Yeah, and that really, pushing that out goes into your parking. It's really gonna just choke off your parking, to your parking areas or the, you know, slope regardless, but it's gonna make it tough.
With the slope.
Because I thought of that, I mean, I read that too, like, if you could have a, you know, the building's so close to the road too. That's part of the problem, you know, when you think of a lot of these Dunkin' Donuts, the Chick Flakes, the buildings are set back more, so there's room in that, you know, you got, you got that hundred-and-fifty feet, just to get out back, two-hundred feet to get to the back of the, the building where the drive-through starts. You know, where your ordering starts, this, you know, you, it's, it's closer, it's not back further. Um, and, yeah. I mean, I, I think they, you know, to a point, you know, having the extra space between the drive-through and, you know, the pickup spot and the order spot hopefully helps with that, I mean, they've got the data, I, I, you know.
A- as you said, Mr. Chair, if this were new construction, it wouldn't be laid out, uh, as, as this is. This is the building where the buil- business is already located, we're trying to improve the situation.
Yeah. Dick, anything else?
No, thank you.
Alright. And, a- and I got your, your memo, you know, from the pl- planning board, so, again, once the final plan's done, um, you guys have a copy of it, just keep that in your mind, Patrick, the, the, the comments in the planning board, and, um, you know, um, at some point, we'll probably, when they get the final rendition here, just check it all out, give it the once-over. Um, any, anything else from anybody that, yes, ma'am, go ahead?
Jean Segliano, um, I have a concern with...
Your address, please, real quick?
Twenty-seven Susie Drive.
Thank you.
Um, when you're coming up the hill and you're turning right, that's easy. But when you're coming the other way and you're turning left, if that's a one-way, you're now blocking Palmigusset. So the stack of cars trying to turn left could be blocked, making it worse for Palmigusset? I applaud the idea, I thought they were trying to make it better for traffic, but now I kinda see that wasn't really the goal. Um, and it would be great if it did something to make the traffic less in that little area. And has anyone ever thought of putting the entrance directly across from Palmigusset? Would that make anything better for traffic?
Well, the building's right there right now, ma'am, if you look at that plan, you see that building right there, and then right across from Palmigusset's that.
Right, but I see they're putting, um, the drive-through in front of the building, so I just didn't, it's, like if the entrance just sifted down. I, I don't know if that would be better. I'm not an engineer, but I just...
You mean to have a legal four-way intersection?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Would that make it, there'd be, part of the problem is there's so many e- access egress, you got Fairview, you got that, you got the gas station. There's just a lot of cars coming out, and it can be very confusing to drivers.
Well, I always thought if you could put a light there, peop- uh, you wouldn't have so much craziness, it still might be bad traffic, but...
It's hard to put a...
But the, the current entrance is not a, it's not a public way, I mean, I, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't think you can have a stoplight that affects the current entrance to Dunkin' Donuts.
No, because it is an opposite Palmigusset.
It's offset, yeah.
But if it was, if it was moved down, maybe that would be a better way for the traffic in town, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, anybody? Alright. Um, that being said, we'll just continue this, this hearing to another date. Um, what works well for, what do you think from a timeframe, uh, gentlemen? When you would have a, a new plan prepared, I would assume we, we should have that plan, have a chance to take a look at it, and then meet, right? If we could have at least a, a week or so, Tamika, to disperse the plan and get feedback, right? I mean, before our hearing, you know? We'll want to submit, you know, distribute that to the town departments, and then, uh, so I don't know, how much time do you think, Patrick?
I can't see that happening in less than a month, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I mean, it's, whatever, whatever you guys want, we just gotta continue the hearing. Uh, you know, from a time point of view, just might have to give us an extension, gentlemen, um, so we don't run out of time, you know, for, but, you know, legal time that you have to have in Duncan State, so.
Okay.
So we usually meet on Wednesday evening, so I don't know if there's a particular date that works well for you guys, and then we can see if you vote for available to?
For some weeks, sorry.
Pick a date and just keep kicking it down.
Yeah, but we have like ninety days to, for the hearing to be finished, or if not, if not within that, they have to grant us an extension, or else we have to vote.
Right.
So that, so, so it's in their favor to, to extend it, and as we get it right, you know, don't just deny them, so.
Mr. Chair, can we infer June fifth, please?
June fifth. My daughter graduates the sixth, I think, right?
I'm done with that.
The last one. He's the sixth.
Just take the next one.
I think I'm good, the fifth?
It's okay with me.
Yeah.
It's okay with you.
Yeah, let's shoot for the fifth. Just gotta make sure my daughter's graduation is not the, see, the fifth or the sixth, I'm pretty sure it's the sixth. Just gotta make sure. Yeah, messed up. Not if you wanna go home again. But let's shoot for that, yeah, okay. And do we need, for time, do we need an extension for them for that date?
No, because I, yeah, I, for the ninety days, I believe, is, um, July first. They submitted on April first, so we're...
Yeah, May first was the, yeah, May first was the clocked in. Well, that's the planning board thing, yeah.
Yeah, I think the actual date was April first.
Application. Yup, okay. Alright, so, um, I guess thanks, everybody, for being here, thank you, gentlemen, for everything, all the comments from the public.
I just need a motion from the board to continue the hearing.
You got it, so do we, uh, if we don't hear any of the comments from anything, um, we'll all look for a motion to continue.
So moved.
Alright, thank you, second?